Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So there's Sarah. Hi, Sarah. I think we have everybody. Okay, reminder that we could have a non-public, and I think we're going to have one tonight. Is that right, Esther?
Correct.
Okay, good. I'm gonna move this to full screen so I can see you guys a little bit better. There we go. And first thing up, the approval of the minutes. So we have March 10th, the public minutes. Does anyone have any comments? Corrections?
I do.
Sarah?
Hi. And so I don't have them pulled up, but so I wrote in my notes that in the section two, your name is spelled incorrectly.
Yep, that's right. It's missing an L.
Yep. And then just in section eight, that fourth line needs a period at the end of the sentence.
The fourth, yeah, I think it's an unfinished sentence.
Yeah, I have that highlighted. It's an incomplete sentence. As Ms. Lucas noted that, and then that's it.
Yes. That was about, I think I requested that when we get to about June this year, I think the board needs to know where kids are within their grade and what they should have accomplished. So following the assessments, for example, we know like X percent of kids achieved their grade level reading, Y percent did not. Just to understand how much was accomplished this year and where our kids as we go into the next year. Do you remember, Kate, what that?
Cheryl, I remember you saying at the end of the year you'd like to look at some of that data, but I don't remember what I noted at that point.
Okay.
Crafting.
So why don't we strike that sentence? Ms. Lucas noted that. We'll strike that. And can we replace that with? The board would like an update on achievement in June.
Cheryl, can we have everyone mute themselves if they have forgotten?
Oh, yeah, sorry. I should ask everyone to do that. Sorry. If you're not talking, could you please mute yourself? We do have a lot of background noise. Happy to have you all here. I'm so used to ignoring the background noise because I'm on Zoom all day long. But you're right, that would be nice. And of course, we're recording, right, Esther? Good. Okay, anybody else have any adjustments? I had a couple, but I'll go last. Miss Erin, Kate, no, okay. Under number two, it says board members chose which policies they'd like to be part of. I think that's committees. We're talking about different committees. And the board, I'm sorry, not the board, the building, it says building policy. I think it's building committee. That's that school-driven committee for the plan for the building. One other typo. There we go. On part six, in the second paragraph, the sentence that starts, wait until the chair meets, I think it's wait until the board chairs, plural, meet. Yeah, because that was a board chairs meeting. We were anticipating having a following week. And then under public input in the first paragraph, at this point, it is significantly more than that due to more parents needing transportation. So the word than needs to be inserted. And I think that was it for me. Anybody else? No? Okay. All right. So while moving on to the next one, that would be the 24th public minutes. Non-public or is the public? Oh, that's the short one, right? Anybody have anything on the short one, Wednesday, March 24? I'm gonna say no, because I don't see anybody. Oh, Sarah, you're way down there on my board. So sorry, I have to look around, find everybody. Good. What about the non-public for that night? Everything accurate? Okay, I don't see anything. So does, would anyone like to make a motion to accept those minutes?
I'll make such a motion.
Thank you, Sarah. Give a second.
One second.
Thanks, Erin. Okay, roll call vote, and I'm gonna start at the top. So Erin?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So that's five zero zero, right? Four, five, yeah, okay. Okay, next up, our board reports. We did not, the chairs reports first. We did not have a chairs, a joint, chairs meeting. But a couple of things I did want to bring up. We had a rocky meeting last time with questions on some items that were under discussion with the working conditions, but it's, I can happily say that we have arrived at an agreement for our MOA and signed it. So that, all that has been resolved, and I'm sure, you know, you guys have heard the output of that as well. And if anybody's missed the update since the last meeting, Dr. Ryan's most recent communication on return to school date of next Monday, and how we arrived there and why it was switched from May 3rd, that came out, I think, last Friday, if I remember correctly. So that communication is probably useful if you haven't been keeping up with all these changes, but I kind of find that hard to believe at this point, really. It's been in the press so much. So that's it from the chair. Shall we go to financial reports? Do we have Molly?
No, Molly is not here today.
We have Michelle. Hi, Michelle. Nice to see you.
Hi.
Sorry.
So I believe in your board pack, you see that last month, we had remaining expenses of $753,000, which is now on increased. We have more remaining of 868. And the reason for that is is that we have relieved some of the encumbrances that are not needed anymore. The large part of that being your transportation, as we negotiated, being charged only for usage. We're seeing a lot of savings there. We also had savings in legal and savings in your PT person who was grant-funded for this year for you. So that is why you were seeing the financial where it is right now. We are currently projecting your fund balance at the end of the year at slightly over $1 million. But we do anticipate that as the kids go back to school, that we will be seeing more expenses being, being spent.
So when you say that, do you mean the encumbrances will shift again?
They will shift. We anticipate, we were given a slight heads up that we may see some, some more hours for some of the aides. And we also were wondering if the board would like to, the retirees this year, if you would like to encumber the retirement stipends of this year's money. And then we just don't know if more supply purchase orders are going to be created in order for the kids to return to school.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
Michelle, I think we have a couple of people that are somewhat new to the board. Can you speak a little bit around the retirement and the choice to take from this year's budget? Can you speak to that a little bit?
Yep. So we, you know, when people do retire, there is the choice for the board, if you have funds remaining at the end of the year, that you can make the choice to use current year funds to pay for their retirement stipends, or we can pay for them out of the following years. Monies. Sometimes the next year's budget will have a retirement provision. But it's, it's totally a board decision as to whether they want to use current year's funds for that.
About how big are we talking about this year?
We're looking at about $160,000 all told for the retirement stipends.
That's more than I thought you were gonna say. Wow, okay. And when do we need to decide that by?
We don't need a definite decision this month, possibly next month, and then we can put that into a financial for you.
Okay. We don't usually look at our fund balance with the revenues in it, right? Typically, we don't see that. So what we're calling out here are things that are obviously very favorable, and also that COVID relief money that freed up expenses in our, in our budget this year, which is a blessing.
Right. So a lot, I mean, the reason why it is larger than normal is because of the unanticipated revenues that we did receive, yes.
And Cheryl, you're right. Normally, we don't bring in the revenues, but because we have the public hearing to expend that S R money, that part of the revenue can be expended. Normally, it can't. So the health trust revenue can't be.
Right.
Yes, or COVID relief money can.
Correct.
Hearing you guys had.
So will there be any discussion under the other bullet points on some incremental things we might want to consider spending this year to get us set up for next year, or do we, we have, you know, extended school year, all that I'm sure is covered in these numbers, but I'm wondering if you plan to address that separately.
Right. Usually, we start to address those and kind of have the principals bring forward their ideas at the May meeting. So we have those, so we get a more, the most accurate number we can get for encumbrances. So that's one of the reasons we wanted to know about uncovering retirement.
Any questions from anybody?
I guess I would have a question. I would, I would like to know from administration if they think, and I'm gonna assume yes, that the budget for summer and whatnot is going to be larger than usual, and so that we should take into consideration for making this decision around the retirement stipend.
So I can tell you that we've started that conversation both with the senior leadership team that's come up at several of our principals' meetings, and we did propose for the summer a six-week program instead of a four-week program, and we did open it up to significantly more students. So there will certainly be more expenses to cover, more than anything, probably personnel and some transportation, but certainly it will be more expensive to run the summer programming than it has been in the past.
And do we have that already anticipated in the, in the budget, Kate, or does this come out of next year's budget?
So we have, we have, we did increase it two years ago, and we increased it this year, but again, with the expectation for this summer being more intense than ever before, I think, considering, and we did put a survey out to the staff specifically looking to see who was interested in helping. There will definitely be more at any other time with, at least in recent history, Cheryl.
I'm sorry, I missed part of what you said in that last sentence.
We expect the personnel will be significantly more than any year, at least in history. So there will be even more, you know, costs for this year's summer. We're calling it Summer Learning Academy because it's more than just E S Y.
Okay. And even though it takes place basically after this school year is closed, the money comes out of this budget? Or not?
It comes out of this budget, well, both. It comes out of this budget, but also next year's if we need it to. But it usually comes out of years' budgets because you anticipate ahead of time.
Okay. All right. Well, I'm glad we're on this side of the financial equation rather than the other side. Last year was a bit different. So looking forward to hearing how we might set ourselves up for success next month. Any other questions for anybody? Okay, let's move on then. Manifests, do what do we need to do on manifests?
Yep. So the manifests were included. If you want to make a motion to accept those, that would be great.
Okay. Would somebody like to make that motion? I can't see you. Erin, is that you?
Motion to accept the manifest.
Thank you. And a second?
Checking it.
Thank you, Kate. And a roll call vote, and I'm gonna sneeze, so sorry. Erin?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
And Sarah, where are you?
Yep, I'm here. Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay. So five zero zero. All right, that's everything in finance today, right? So we're moving right along, my favorite kind of meeting, to the superintendent's report. So I'm gonna hand that to you, Esther. Thank you.
Great. You all received that in your board packet. Just gonna do a couple of highlights. HR, we have moved forward with that nationwide advertisement for the D I J S A U position. HR has got with payroll, contracts ready to roll once folks are nominated. So that's all in great shape. The committees around the balanced scorecard and the portrait of an educator are closing in and working hard. We hope to bring things to the joint board in May and June. So Portrait of an Educator in May and Balanced Scorecard in June. So those are all working, moving along fine. We've been doing our MLP meetings for research certification. All the administrators at the S A U level meet individually to review that three-year professional growth with individual meetings with teachers and counselors and anyone that's up for research each year. Those are always amazing and always kind of a highlight this time of year because you see all the work the teachers have done and the growth they've made, and they just, kudos to all the teachers and everyone else that was up for research, counselors, et cetera, because the work's amazing, and we're really moving this district toward that competency-based learning system, which is fabulous and not easy to do. So everyone's really working hard. As you know, our second round of vaccines are this week for all of our schools. That went well on Monday. We will do Stratum School tomorrow. And then Lincoln in Maine on Friday, and the rest of the buildings, except for New Fields, that was done on Monday on Saturday at the high school. So last but certainly not least, we continue to work with mental health partners and trying to promote the support for students, staff, and parents upon the return to school and recognizing that that puts perhaps some extra anxiety on folks. Students, we have up interventions, different ideas and different approaches to that, looking at providing tier one and tier two supports in the classroom in many of our buildings. So upping that, looking at assessments in that process to ensure that kids are getting what they need. First and foremost are probably in our reality, the social and emotional needs that will need to be looked at, because this is for some children. This is their first return since last March, and for all kids at Stratum, even if they have returned, unless they were coming five days a week because of individual circumstance, this will also be pushing everyone to five days a week, which, as we know, if we think to a beginning of the school year, can be exhausting for everyone, the kids included, because that's a different pace. So we're trying to anticipate that and plan for that. We've done some brainstorming sessions with our student services folks. We will have another one on how to support our students around social and emotional, mental health, as well as our staff. We've been pushing out a four-part miniature series around how to support yourself and build resiliency with short little activities they can choose to do, or just read to raise their awareness that maybe some of the feelings they're having about returning are quote-unquote "normal" due to the trauma and the stress of working through the pandemic. We also are going to provide scripts for teachers, should they choose to use them upon return to school. And I think it's sometimes I'm just trying to find out who is talking so I can mute them. I can't see. So if you're just
We got it.
Thanks. And so those scripts are just giving teachers some verbiage around, hey, isn't it great to return to school? And, you know, you also may be feeling a little bit nervous about that, or it's not just all, isn't it fabulous? And that's where it ends, because there is a variety of feelings as we return to school at the beginning of any school year. So just reminding teachers and giving them something, so they don't have to think about it quite so much. We also have a resource document that's been pushed out on the web for our teachers that has all kinds of resources for them, as well as we're offering some kind of tripods and check-in systems at a variety of our schools where you can have colleagues they can check in with. Talk about self-care and work through recognizing that started the four-part series last night, last night or the night before. I can't remember. I apologize. Two nights ago, I believe, sorry. Around tools and strategies for parents to work with kids, working through a pandemic and what reentry and what this, some emotions that people may be facing, and how to implement that with your family and ask questions, et cetera. I was not able to attend, but Ellen Reska was able to attend, and she said it was very helpful and informative, and I think there was about 12 to 15 parents that attended. So not a huge group, but certainly we hope that more will attend as this series three more times on different topics. We also will be offering a panel on May 13th for the community. And the focus of that will really be balancing the mental health and academic needs of our students. We'll have the trauma center represented. We'll have our local health partner, Seagull's Mental Health, will have a representative, and we'll have school representatives from each building. They'll do a short presentation, about 10 minutes, and then they'll, we'll take questions ahead of time, as well as through the chat during that panel. So trying to, again, help parents with balancing everything that's going on in their families with their students. And finally, our behavior intervention teams are certainly up and running. Our referrals have increased. And part of that, we're attributing to the anticipation of the transition. Change is always challenging, and even if it's good change, if you think of a wedding or a celebration, it still can be stressful, right? So we want to acknowledge and support our kids to do that. So those bit teams are, we're fortunate, we have the four teams, and those are up and running, and those folks are working hard. So I thank those people that give their time to be on the bit teams and and support our students across the board, K-12. And I think unless anyone has questions on that report, that will do it for me is in regard to the board report.
I don't have any questions, but I attended the event on Monday for understanding fear, anxiety, and upset. It was very good, and I passed the link along to a bunch of my coworkers as well, because there, you know, a lot of people in my circle who are parents, you know, trying to balance all of this and work through it as well. I thought they did a nice job, and I'm looking forward to the next one. So I encourage people to find that flyer and sign up. It's free, Monday and Tuesday evenings, between now and middle of May, if I remember correctly. Yeah.
Four sessions.
Yeah, worthwhile, good tips. So thank you for that. That was awesome. Any other questions from anybody? No? Okay. Moving right along. All right, what's next?
Moving on to the nominations list, Cheryl, and I would ask the board, if there is any questions about this or in people in particular, then we would need to go into non-public. If there are no individual questions, and I would ask the board to approve the list as presented. Nominations, just for people that may be new to the board or are listening, this is the list of folks that we will offer a contract to next year within our union and for our administrators.
Anybody have any questions? No, everybody's good. Okay. So would someone like to make a motion here?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'll make a motion to approve all employees on the nomination list.
Give a second.
One second.
Thanks, Krista. Okay, any discussion? No? Okay. Let's go around the horn here. We've got Erin?
Aye.
Krista?
Aye.
Kate?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. So five zero zero. Thank you. Now we're moving to our SMS administrative team report, and probably the drum roll, the part that everybody's been interested in hearing.
Hi, everybody. So good to see you.
It's okay.
Before we get into the plan, I just wanted to sort of piggyback a little bit on what Esther was just sharing in terms of really trying to honor the mixed emotions that everybody's feeling. And just, we've been talking a lot about that as adults at SMS and wanting to be prepared to to have those discussions with our students, but also with each other, because I think the energy around the return of money at Monday is palpable. We are so excited for the kids to come back. But just like Esther said, there's also a myriad of other emotions that we're feeling, right? And we want to be able to validate those and have a safe place to talk about them while also containing the excitement, because it's, it's almost like all the emotions, whatever they are, it's almost elevated right now. And so it really is about how do we support each other so that we can best support the kids, beginning on Monday, who many of them have expressed over the last two weeks, lots of excitement, but also lots of nerves, right? Like, the challenge, the, the change causes nerves. I would say to a kid, they're excited and want to do it, but I think they're also going, oh, my gosh, what's it gonna look like? How's it gonna feel? I'm gonna, you know, have new classmates. There's just all of those questions. And so I think we're being really cognizant of that. The second piece I wanted to add is that about a week ago, I had sent out a survey to the staff, just sort of trying to for admin to sort of better gauge where they were in their own experience right now. The question was simple, it's like, where are you currently? You know, when you sit with yourself, like, where are you? And we asked them to sort of rate themselves on a scale of five. So five is like, I'm excelling. Four is I'm thriving. Three is I'm surviving. Two is I'm really stressed, and one is I'm in crisis. And percentage-wise, we had about five, we had 80 people respond, so that's not quite, I mean, we have about 120 people, so 80 people responded, so I want to be upfront about that. 5% said they are excelling. 21% feel like they're thriving. 53% feel like they're surviving, and 20% feel like they are stressed out. We did, thankfully, no one was in crisis. But I felt like that information was important for admin to have, but also important for you guys, because every month, Krista in particular, has asked, like, how's the staff doing? How is the staff doing? That's been a question that's been asked numerous times, and I feel like it's certainly not specific to an individual, but it gives you an idea of where we are as a staff right now in, on April 14th. So I just think that was important to share with you guys.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that. I'd love to see, or I would like to hope that those numbers would move towards the top of the scale once everybody gets this, this holiday break. Yeah. And a little bit of rest.
I think that's one of the benefits. I mean, there's many. There's so many benefits to starting on Monday, but I do think that's one of the benefits of, I think if it was the third, that we'd be all consumed over vacation about the third. It's hard to put that away, and I do believe having a week with the kids will enable us, I think, hopefully, for some of us to really kind of decompress a little bit over vacation, because it won't be the anticipatory anxiety of that first day back, which I think is definitely a perk of the start on Monday. So do we have screen share?
Oh, that looks great.
That's a lot of tomatoes.
Those are my, that's in my barn last summer. Yeah, isn't that great? Makes me excited for August when they really come in, and they're so delicious. All right. So I tried to, excuse me, I tried to follow the same format that we presented back in October, when we were transitioning to the the alternating days and, and/or remote, just to kind of streamline things and present very similar information, so it felt there was some continuity in the presentations. So that's what we're doing tonight. So we're gonna start with the survey results that we sent out to families. We'll talk about what a typical school day will look like and feel like for our students. We'll give just one example, understanding that some things might be at different times for different classes. We'll talk about the health, health and safety protocols and precautions that are in place or may have changed since the fall, and then some financial implications specific for the board. So we sent a survey out on March 17th. We had, actually, there were 562 respondents, but what we find is when we can pull through the data, we actually realize it's 490 students. And with that, we had 93% of our students wish to return to in-person learning. We had 7% that are remaining remote. And we have 50% of our families, it's actually closer to 51%, but 50% needing transportation. Lost transportation for school. If you guys have any questions as I'm going, feel free to interrupt me. I just can't see your faces because I have this in front of me. So one of the things when the data came in that we really, I mean, we were going in with this mindset as well, but as the data came in, it became really clear to us how important and how possible it was to keep almost every single child with their current teacher and classmates. And to be honest, that was, I think, probably one of our biggest concerns about this change was that we would have to have students with a third teacher or students that had new classmates that they hadn't experienced before. Or even thinking about our teachers that would get six or seven new kids with seven weeks of school left and really wanting to be able to report accurately about their progress or their successes and really feeling like there wasn't just enough information in six weeks. So we were, as I said, almost every single person. I think there's actually only two exceptions. We have one student who chose to be, who was every other day remote that chose, I mean, sorry, every other day in person that chose to go remote. So that was a change. And then we had one in the fourth grade classroom, Ms. Hazel time, the entire class chose to stay remote except for one student. So that student is coming back, but was able to go into the fourth grade class that the student had at the beginning of the year. So it's only the, it's they're staying with two teachers. They just went back to who they had at the start of the year. So that felt really good for us. Of course, there are a few students that will have new teachers because we have teachers going on maternity leave, but that has nothing to do with the change. I just wanted to make sure I was representing that fairly. So in kindergarten, we have four in-person classes and one of those has two remote students. That's how we made this possible. So we did have a couple of students up to four in any one of the grade levels that chose to stay remote. And they will be remaining with their teacher, but remotely. We have two K one and they're both in person. First grade, we have four in-person classes and that includes one that has four remote students. Second grade, we have six in-person classes includes two of which includes two, which each have three remote students. Third grade, five in-person classes. And that's one that will have remote students, two, three, four multi-age classes, both in person. In fourth grade, we have three in-person classes and one fully remote class. And then in fifth grade, we have four in-person classes and one of those has one remote student.
Kate, I have a question whenever you have a chance.
Yep, absolutely. Go ahead.
Can you speak to the class sizes and will the teachers who do have remote children as well as a person have lower class sizes?
So interestingly enough, the ones that have remote students are the one that have one or two or three remote students are the ones that were fully remote before. And so they're keeping all of their kids and those, most of our remote classes were anywhere from like 10 to, I think the biggest is the fifth grade class, which was 21. And out of that 21, all of them are returning except for one. So that's the biggest class, but they're returning in person. The other class is the largest class is a fourth grade class of 20. Any other questions about that slide?
Can I just ask about, so are you saying that in each grade level, there are going to be students that zoom in for the live instruction?
There are. Yeah. When we talked with the families after the the survey went out and and realized there were so few kids, but really keeping them together was important. I met with those teachers and we had some pretty lengthy conversations about how do we do this? What is the best way to do this to serve our students? We explored everything from having potentially one teacher do a K one, two, multi-age, fully remote. And that really felt like that didn't serve our students best if the families and the teachers felt like we could manage those kids zooming in to the live instruction. And that's the model we went with for those students.
Kate, another question for you. Do we have the technology to be able to implement the zooming and the people in person? Are we purchasing that or how does that work?
We did purchase a few things, Krista. We purchased some iPads that are much easier to move around with that are specific for this purpose that aren't already spoken for by students. And then we had to purchase six hotspots. And the reason we bought that is because so much of what the teachers plan to do this spring will be outside. And wifi is not available outside the building. And so this really will be if they're going to the, you know, if they're going to the marsh to do ecosystems, they can bring the kids right with them because they'll have the hotspot in the iPad. So the students really can be with the class the entire day. They go to Stratum Hill Park. It really does allow the student to be with the class the entire seven hours or six hours. I will say that because of the, we don't have the time until May 3rd, some of it may not come in until April vacation. It's been ordered. We just are hoping it's in by Monday, but that's just one of the things that we can't, we can't change Verizon as much as we try.
And the people who are affected, they know what's going on.
Oh, everybody's aware.
Okay, so the the kids like, you know, the one class in first grade that has four remote students. The parents understand how that's going to roll.
Yep, absolutely. So we reached out to all the parents and spoke to them. And then they also, more importantly, they spoke directly with the teachers because really that's who they have the best relationship with. They were able to answer specific questions. But yes, and then actually, I should have mentioned this before. When the survey first went out, there were a few more students. I think parents were really focused on wanting their child to stay with their teacher. That was really important. And when they found out their teacher was going to be in person, they were like, oh, great, we'll be in person too. And it actually worked out great because we now had the room to do that. We weren't going to have to overload another class because the teachers were coming in.
And as far as thinking about staffing in those classrooms that students are zooming in, do we have enough staff to kind of help to man the computer so the teacher can continue teaching?
Yep, we ensure that any room that will have a teacher that's doing both will have an ESP at all times to help to help facilitate that and run some small groups or make sure the technology is working. Or if the teacher happens to be giving a mini lesson, the ESP could be sitting next to the, you know, the devices, they can be checking in with those those few students. So then our school day really doesn't change and we were, this was very, very intentional on the part of all of us really coming together and feeling like this is going to be a big enough change for a lot of people. So if we can keep the school day as similar to what the kids have been experiencing up until now, the better. So in terms of the related arts schedule didn't change, it's still at the same time. Students lunch and recess still at the same time, start of the day, end of the day, still at the same time. Obviously, with some slight adjustment adjustments for the for the additional time for dismissal and arrival. But realistically, the day is very much the same. This was important to all of us. So this is just one example of one teacher's, one teacher's day, right? So there's instruction, there's lunch and recess, there's related arts blocks, and there's obviously arrival and dismissal.
Are you going to walk us through lunch?
I can, when we get to that slide, if you would like.
Okay, good. I don't want to jump ahead. I don't know what you've got coming. And how, and music is remote for everybody?
Yep, library, art and music are remote. So we are hoping as the the weather continues to improve to be able to, so Kate Curtis is our music teacher. She's been working out of the building all year. Our hope is to be able to do more music in person outside because singing has obviously been very, very limited because you can't do it inside. But with sort of one of those things, it's really going to depend on weather and space and and things of that nature and what they're currently working on. But library, art and music are still remote, whereas PE is definitely in person.
Kate, why are they in remote?
Well, for most importantly, because we need the space. And ultimately, we we still did not want to, because we still are not completely vaccinated to ask the, for example, to ask any one of them to be with 500 kids in the course of a week really increases their exposure. Whereas a classroom teacher is with their same kids every day, but to ask someone that has that many children going in and out of their room, and then we need to clean between classrooms and it would really be a be problematic. So related arts classes go back to back to back. And if we have the kids go into the art room, 15 minutes to clean in between before the next group could go in and really isn't possible. And so with remote, they get to continue to have access to their full programming.
So would that carry on? So once the teachers are fully vaccinated, the, could the teachers, just in in lieu of decreasing screen time, could the teachers go into the classrooms?
We could probably explore that, but again, it's one of those things, I don't know how you bring art on a cart is really not a feasible programming thing. Same with the library, you know, it right, trying to, trying to preserve the the integrity of the program is also really, really important to us. And this is how we've been best able to do it this year for sure.
Right. I just, I guess it's a matter of art on a card or art on maintaining integrity of art on a cart versus art on a screen. It's kind of challenging either way, but I completely understand until the teachers are are fully vaccinated. But is it something that potentially we can revisit? Obviously, everything is going to be an adjustment, but.
Yeah, we could certainly revisit it. I, I mean, I don't, yeah, I'm open, I'm open to whatever, Krista, we can certainly revisit it. I, at this point, I feel like this is the most sound way for us to approach this with our kids. I think that and to be quite honest, the feedback that we're getting about the experience the kids are having with library, art and music hasn't been questioned. It's been, I think, I get the most feedback about the art program with Caitlin, I get from parents all the time. So I think I feel good about the program they've been getting, but we can certainly revisit it if we feel like it would benefit the students or the staff.
Okay.
Just sorry, a piggyback question. So just thinking about the limitations and why you've made this decision. This is going to look entirely different for next year, though.
We haven't even, yes. And we're hoping so much will look better, you know, look different for next year. We're just not, I have, I've said to the staff, I'm not even thinking about next year until after vacation. Our focus really has to be on this transition going successfully and smoothly and the kids feeling connected to school. And ultimately, really, we are going to come back from vacation, really focus on E S Y and then focus on next year. I don't, the planning is like what we've been doing for 14 months and I see it being pretty intense for another four or so months to be, to be honest.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Kate, this is Esther. I, I am seeing in the chat some questions just about the arrival and dismissal, the five minute window. It's by alphabet by last name, correct? The A through K is last name. And a five minute window, does that mean they need to be exactly there at 8:45?
Nope, it's a 10 minute window and no, they don't. We just ask them because it helps with the flow of traffic. If we didn't break it up this way, it would be all of those cars at once. We've had this all year and it's worked really well. It just sort of helped everybody kind of trickle in. We've gotten it down to a science. It is really efficient and goes really well. We just want to ensure that we don't have traffic backed up out onto 33 that would not go well. We're fortunate because there's so many more families taking the bus. So we actually feel really confident in how fast the line will go.
Esther, is the chat function enabled? I can't see it.
I just asked the same thing.
Only enabled to the, to the hosts.
It's only enabled to the host as a request from the chair because they can't enable it to everyone. So I'm going to monitor it and I will read if there's something up like that question that just came up.
Is it my imagination or is this a later dismissal time than what we were talking about before? I thought we didn't have buses pass like the one o'clock hour, the two o'clock hour, something like that.
That was additional buses, Cheryl. We wanted to hire additional buses. These buses have been carved out for us all year.
Okay.
With to have additional buses earlier, if we had done the extended SEL time, that's what we were looking for. Those buses were already avail, were already taken by other schools in the district. That's what that was about.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any more questions on this slide? I think we can move. There we go.
Okay. So lunch and snack has been a question that lots of people have asked. So classes will be eating outside unless there is significant inclement weather. And what I mean by that is it's one thing for it to be a little drizzly and cloudy. It's an entirely different thing if it's a lightning storm. And so we just want to make sure we're prepared for all types of weather at this point. So in addition, we've set up hand sanitizing stations outside so that if a student is going from recess to lunch, no problem, you can have your hands sanitized before you have your lunch because we know how important hand hygiene is right now. We had two tents installed this week by Marshall Rental. They're 20 by 60 foot tents. They are outside on the side of the gym. And then additionally, if there really is, you know, really yucky weather, we also have the gym and half the cafeteria. Of course, when we're eating, students have to be six feet apart and faced facing the same direction. So these, this is why we need this additional space. If it's sunny out, you can sit anywhere you want on our grounds and our grounds are absolutely beautiful. But we also wanted to ensure that if it's kind of drizzly or really cloudy or 90 degrees and people want to be in the shade, that there are options for that. You know, of course, the tents will be used for instructional space as well, but this is preserved during the lunchtime for lunch. As a very last resort, if, you know, we just wanted to have like, what's our emergency plan if something terrible were to happen? Children can eat in their classrooms. They would just have to eat in shifts because kids have to be six feet apart, facing the same direction. So we know we can't fit our kids, 20 kids in a classroom at six feet apart. So if they were eating, they would be, you know, half of your group would eat and then maybe the teacher would be doing a read aloud for 20 minutes with with the other half and then they would switch. That would be sort of our, our backup plan. Are there other questions about lunch and snack?
Yep, I have requests. The question is around six feet at lunch and the, the reason it's six feet at lunch is because that's the guidelines, the current guidelines for when your masks are off, it's still six feet, not three feet.
Any questions from the board about that?
Not from me.
Anne has done an incredible job of preparing for this and getting a system down that's going to work for 500 kids in the building. And her staff has been unbelievable. And she'll be partnering with the classroom ESPs and teachers to get lunch and snack to kids on time and cleaned up. It's been, it's a well-oiled machine at this point. And it's been impressive what Anne has been able to offer to our kids to keep them engaged in our lunch program. Given all the limitations on how we can serve food and prepare food. So we're feeling really good about the plan she has in place for starting on Monday.
Kate, can you expand a little bit? This is a question in the chat about how kids get their hot lunches.
Yep. So we actually have, I don't know if you've ever ordered pizza to go and they come and they show up with the bags, like the insulated bags. So we have insulated bags for each classroom. The lunches are obviously ordered by families. They're packed by the cafeteria staff in containers. They're put in the warming, cooling, insulated bags. They're picked up by the ESP or the classroom teacher and brought to the students outside. I think that's what people are asking.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions about that? So drop off and pickup procedures will be a little bit different, not terribly different, but we did want to highlight that tonight. And most important, I know I know all the parents are exhausted, but we are seeing an increase in the number of students that are not the parents that are not completing the health screening, whether it's pickup patrol or paper. So it's just a reminder that that has to be done every day and we have to have it. So most important thing to remember at drop off is that we need to have that form either in paper or through pickup patrol. So we have about roughly 250 students taking the bus and 250 students taking or being dropped off by caregivers or parents. So we, because we have so many more students coming by the bus, we decided to change the loop for drop off back to what it was last year. And the reason we're doing that is if we have 250 kids getting off the bus, the only way for them to truly get from where they're dropped off back to where they need to wait till they can go inside is through that loop. And if we have 250 kids going through there, they will not be safe for them to go with all of that parent traffic. It would really be, it would extend the time a lot. It would be, kids would be everywhere. It would just didn't feel as safe to us. And so we've repositioned the loop to where it used to be for drop off. And the buses will continue to use their bus loop. Even though the location of the drop off has changed, we're still using the same procedure. We still have, we actually have more staff members out there to facilitate for duty, but it'll be 15 cars at a time. They will get out, they will go over to the zone that their grade level is in and we'll dismiss 15 cars at a time. That way cars are all stopped and we move them at the same time. Once we know kids are clear. Those students that are taking the bus understand, the parents or caregivers of those students understand that there will be two to three students in every seat. They will be assigned seats. Windows will be open for increased ventilation, but there will social distancing of three feet will not be maintained or cannot be guaranteed, I should say, depending on the bus.
Kate, I'd just like to speak to the screening. There's a question is why are we requiring the screener? Is it the governor order? Is it the MOA, etc.? We're requiring the screener for a few reasons. One is because with an increased number of students attending, we need to be able to close contact trace and it also helps us if there are any students that haven't been flagged screened. If someone just joined, if they could mute, that would be great. As well as with our insurance carriers, we've presented the return to school plans that we are, would be doing health screenings through the school, either through that pickup patrol or a paper form. And in order for our PIMEX to ensure that we are following our return to school plans, that is what we put forth. And so we need to continue that held screening. That is what we put forth and so we need to continue that health screening, but most importantly is to ensure that all students are screened before they enter school one way or another.
Any other questions about this slide?
This says, can you share what the assigned seating is before we go back? I don't know what that means.
I don't either.
So. Yeah, the other question which I wrote down because I thought that Kate, are you going to cover recess? Is there a slide on recess?
I'll, I talk about the zones. Yep.
Yep. So I was just waiting till Kate was done and then if the questions aren't answered, I will ask the questions.
Yep. So I'll just go back a couple of slides to do that. So recess, there is six zones at recess. I'm sorry, five zones at recess. And we have two to three classrooms, depending on the size of the classroom in each zone. So for example, one zone is the playground. So there will be up to two classes. There's actually only one time. There's three classes and it's three kindergarten classes for a total, I think of thirty-six kids. But they're in zones as they have been all year. There are adult, there are two adults. There are how many? Let's see, three, five, seven, eight adults outside at recess time. Those adults go from zone to zone with the kids so that they know the kids well. And they obviously they play outside. They have to wash their hands before they go out. They wash their hands after they come in. And they, we encourage social distancing as much as we can. Children playing really struggle with that. The good news is they're often really in motion and kind of running by each other or using a pool noodle for tag or something like that, but. We encourage that as much as possible and remind students.
And they have a mask outside, Kate, during recess?
Every, everybody's masked all the time unless they're eating or taking a mask break intentionally.
And the assigned seating question was about buses. You mentioned they'd have assigned seating on buses.
Yep. So the reason we're doing that is for contract contact tracing. So if a student was on a bus and we found out they were positive by using the assigned seating, we can. Look on it and know who was, who was within three feet for that 10 minutes. It's what it allows us to do. That's why the assigned seating is happening. My assumption or I shouldn't say that the plan is that they will, as they get on there, just here's your seat. You're sitting there and then we'll have it labeled and then we'll know moving forward.
Thanks.
Yep. Do we have bus monitors? Did you say that already? How is that being?
So Cheryl, we posted and nobody applied for that, but there are, you know, I can't, I mean, we've actually talked about this a lot as a staff. It has been remarkable how. Responsible the students have been. I think the students want to be in school and they want to be healthy and they want to protect themselves and others. And so they have been incredibly responsible about. You know, following the expectations. They've been great on the bus. We haven't had a single bus incident all year. You know, people are, the kids are really taking this seriously. So we've been fortunate with that regard, but then because we'll have assigned seats, it'll be so much easier because there aren't bus monitors.
And Kate, one more clarifying question. You mentioned as kids get on bus that first day that where they sit, then they'll have the assigned seating. So I assume family members. Will be sitting together because they'll get on the bus at the same time, correct?
A hundred percent. Yep. In years past, it would be like kindergarten, the front, then first grade, then second. I really think it's going to be, we know kindergarten kids sit closest to the front. That's important because it's really hard to see them in any other area. But really beyond that, it won't be like fifth grade gets the back of the bus. It will really be, this is your assigned, because this is where your sibling is and this is when you board because of safety reasons and COVID protocols. So we wanted to just remind everybody of what's in place at S M S in terms of COVID protocols and how we're keeping students and staff healthy and safe. So health screening forms, we have anywhere from eleven to twenty students per classroom. Students have their own individual workspaces. Everyone is masked. We are maintaining three feet social distance between students. Hand hygiene has been incredible. It's remarkable that you don't really even have to remind the students anymore. It is so much a part of their routine. That they almost remind you before you even think of it. They really have done a wonderful job with that. We continue to think about layers of protection. Cohorts, which is a classroom, they have shared space and they have materials in that classroom. And again, they can use the same materials. It's a matter of. Clean hands before you go in, you use the materials and you clean your hands after. And it's worked really, really well for us. We continue to do contact tracing, routine cleaning. Of course, we had the installed Merv thirteen filters in the bipolar ionization systems, which means our air is pretty much as clean as it can get. It was funny. At some point, someone had asked about. Air purifiers and they're actually, this system actually cleans to a level beyond the air purifier, which was really exciting for us to learn. We continue to use multiple entrances and exits because we try to keep the congestion in the hallways to a minimum and it's worked really well for us and we can plan to do that moving forward. We have our outside zones for recess. We have all the marked areas. We still have a no visitor policy and it's worked really well. The bathrooms are clean three times a day. The electrostatic machine is used in every classroom. We have the vital oxide available in every space and we have hand sanitizers that were installed in every space in the building as well.
Excellent question. Do we still have like locked classroom doors, locked enclosed classroom doors? Or are we keeping those open for ventilation?
They have been, they've remained open this year, Cheryl.
Okay.
I will add to this. Nurse Lily did, we have done several times throughout the year, sort of like a health office update. Is what we've called it and it's been for our staff in particular, and she's done it a few times this year where she offers Zoom sessions and she prepares slides. Because as you know, things have changed pretty rapidly throughout the year, whether it's a guideline or a recommendation or. Protocols and procedures. And she's done a really nice job. This week she did it Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday after school for the staff to come and just. Hear about all the updates and then she collects questions and shares a frequently asked question document with the staff, just so that everybody's on the same page and getting the same information. It's been really, really helpful.
Kate, do the teachers need any more disinfectant, anything else to make their day go smoother and easier or they feel safer? Moving forward with the kids five days a week, is there something more that we can purchase or? How are we with that? Because I can't imagine there's ever enough disinfectant when you have a kindergartner around.
We've actually been really fortunate. So part of it was that the, I guess it was, I guess through the fall, a lot of it was given to schools through the government. So they were, you're sort of like, you put in your order, you could go pick it up. And then we really did a nice job, you know, using Tim Harrington, our facilities director, who I cannot say. Literally the man has been working dusted on seven days a week, hasn't missed a beat. He's exhausted. But he has like done everything in his power to make this transition possible. He's just been incredible. I can't say enough, him and his crew. But we really haven't had, we haven't not had a supply if it was needed, whether that's everything from masks and face shields and gowns. So the P P E stuff to everything from additional paper towels and hand sanitizer and he has been really truly on top of it and we've been really, really lucky that we haven't ever run out of anything. We've been in really good shape. Thank you for asking, Chrisa.
Kate, how many teachers have had to switch classrooms to adjust for the spacing?
Oh, Lord. Great questionnaire. Let me think about the map. So what we, let me try to rephrase that. What we tried to do was not move. Teachers who were already in a space, we used, we moved other groups of people. So the literacy team was moved. We did have a couple of classroom teachers, I shouldn't say, we had a couple of classroom teachers that were moved, but only had to move one space or two spaces. It was more. E S Ps, the literacy team, the math team had to move, administration had to move, forgetting people, I'm sorry, the speech, speech group had to move. Kate, Selena, who am I missing?
Well, counselor.
School, yeah, thank you.
The B C B A had to move.
Yep, the B C B A had to move. So really, we tried to keep the classrooms that were established. We tried not to move, we tried to move as few as possible. I'm having a hard time phrasing that. We tried to move as few as possible. We moved other people really because. Teachers have far more materials than the rest of us.
So I have a few questions that I don't want to lose track of. Have there been any cases of transmission at school or on the bus?
At this time, no.
Are there any after school programs being offered like Safe?
No.
For the larger classes closer to twenty people, will the kids all have seating options, flexible seating, are desks being used with shields of any sort?
So yes, to flexible seating. Yes, to different areas in the room for different things and was it Plexiglas? Was that the question? I'm sorry, Esther.
Yeah, are desks being used with shields of any sort?
So we are not, students are three feet apart, so they wouldn't be sitting at a desk. They might be sitting at a six foot table. On the ends facing forward, so they're three feet shoulder to shoulder. And there is some Plexiglas in some rooms, but it was actually removed from the C D C's list of mitigation factors. And so we really worked on the social distancing versus using Plexiglas to reduce that. Also, any class that has a large number is in the largest classroom in the building.
And this question may be for you, Selena. For pullout services, are they still one on one?
We now have the opportunity to push into classrooms and we now have the opportunity to pull kids into groups so long as we maintain the three foot distance and the masking and the good hand hygiene.
So I'm going to say if a parent has a specific question about their student, they could contact you.
Absolutely.
That's all the ones in the chat. Thank you.
Any other questions from this slide to the board? So then the financial implications, I don't have exact figures because things are evolving all the time, but I just wanted to kind of give you guys an idea of the things that we know are going to cost money, right? Because that was one of the questions about the unencumbered funds at the end of the year. So personnel, food services, food service, the biggest piece about food service is really about the safety of how you prepare the food and the food travels. So the, the number of. What's the word I'm looking for? Like cartons that the food is in, those have to be thrown away every day, right? So that happens. We did have to buy those insulated bags. We had to buy some carts. It's minimal. It's not a lot of money. I don't want to mislead you, but I just want to be upfront about the things that we know are going to cost money. Chrisa, you had asked about technology, so there is the additional technology costs. Transportation again will be minimal. But on our blue days, we had five buses and our white days, we had four. We're going to have five buses on blue or on all days. So there's just a small increase. It's also significantly less than what we had budgeted for, but I just am putting this out there so it's not. Missed by anybody or an oversight. We did purchase rented some tents and then purchased some tables and other materials and furniture. And then of course, just to ensure that we have additional P P E in the building is also a cost that we anticipate for the spring.
How was it decided on the two tents of that size? Why didn't we get five or?
Because this was all that was available. Great question. This was it.
Okay, will we be returning tablets and Chromebooks?
So we're going to collect all the iPads from kindergarten because we're going to use them differently and distribute them differently, that we're going to remain a one to one in the, in the first through fifth grade classrooms. Not because we want them on technology, that's what we're trying to get away from, but because it is important for some of the things that they do throughout the day. So really it's just having them there for what they need them for. But it's not, we're not expecting, you know, that they have to go back and forth all the time or that kids are going to have a lot of activities on them, but we do have some assignments that require technology. If they're doing research, if they're typing for a paper. They do a lot of communication through Google Classroom, so they will still continue to use their devices, but we will be bringing them to school.
Great. For carpooling, do people still need to fill out pickup patrol, pickup patrol?
So really what we need in pickup patrol is their default. So if they're going to get dropped off, it just can say drop off. It doesn't necessarily have to identify who it is that's doing that because that's what changes just really that we need to know they'll be either dropped off, picked up or be taking the bus. Carpooling that's important is if you are going to have children that are not your own, that you have the, the other children's. Health screening pickup patrol information. What people have done this year is, I'm just going to, Chrisa, do you mind if I use you as an example? If Chrisa was sending her children with me, she would have done the pickup patrol and then sent me a picture of it. So I have it. It's got her name. It's got whether or not they passed the health screening and it's got the date. She can just show us that that's sufficient.
What are the quarantine rules once teachers are vaccinated? Will a class shut down? I think she, I think she means go remote when she says shut down because we haven't had any classes shut down. We've had them go remote.
Or, so it's going to depend on the close contacts, right? So it's going to depend on. You know, if a student was positive and we found out first thing in the morning, they were only there for an hour and we could say there was only two people that were in three feet for, for longer than 10 minutes. Then we're able to contact trace and say, nope, those three kids are going remote. If it's that the student was there all day. And then we found out that it most likely would be the whole classroom would have to quarantine and they would be remote with their teacher.
How long will students coming on a bus be waiting before they can go into school?
So buses typically this year have been arriving anywhere between eight fifty and nine o'clock and we go in at nine ten.
And one more follow up about the after school gatherings. Will after school programs be offered at all for the rest of the school year? And if not, why not?
We will not be offering after school programs because then it would be really, we'd be bringing cohorts together, which then becomes an additional. If there was a case, then we're potentially affecting three or four or five other classrooms. Plus, we need time to be cleaning all the surfaces in the rooms before we're preparing for the next day. And so we are not planning to offer those.
What, what is the guideline for how long a class would need to stay remote?
So currently, if you're isolating, it's a 10 day isolation unless the C D C or the New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services changes their guidelines.
They missed the response about the Chromebooks. Will kids need to return it or bring it with them to school every day?
They'll bring it to school. It will not be going back and forth unless a particular teacher wants the children to be doing something on the Chromebook that night, then it might be going home with them. But it will not be an expectation that it goes back and forth every day.
And still the question on dismissal timing, something about five minutes for dismissal at the end of the day. The five minute window, maybe?
So dismissal starts at two twenty-five. So the buses are, the first two buses will be dismissed at two twenty-five. And the reason we dismiss in pockets is because we don't want congested hallways. Because then if that would then mean contract tracing and congested hallways. And so what we're trying to do is reduce the flow of traffic in the building. So at two twenty-five, we'll, we'll announce for the first two buses of students to leave their classrooms and go aboard the bus. As they're boarding and they're ready to get ready, we'll dismiss the next three buses. As soon as they're out, we can then dismiss the two alphabet breakdowns to go outside and wait for a parent pickup.
Five minute window there is really to get all of the kids outside.
Yeah. Oh, yes. I'm sorry if that's what they were, thank you.
So it would still be divided A through K and L through Z with the 10 minute window. They also, correct?
Yep, you got it.
So it is a staggered pickup. It's just not on that slide, correct?
Yeah, why don't I fix that right now?
Parents should be there at.
Two thirty-five.
Two thirty-five.
Yep.
By alphabet, if you're A through K, correct?
Yep.
And if you are L through Z, it would be two forty-five?
Two forty.
Forty.
Yep.
Hey Kate, I have a parent, my, me being a parent question for you.
Yes.
For those who want a carpool, do you have a preference whether they take the earlier eighty-four, eight forty-five to nine, eight fifty-five period or the eight fifty-five to nine oh five is one better?
Almost exactly, which we were shocked. We thought, oh, this is going to be, you know, it's actually worked okay. And to be honest with you, we've, we've been doing this all year with the alphabet breakdown. It really just helps slow it down a little bit so we can manage it and not have a lot of backup, but it's not. It's, it doesn't have to be perfect every time.
Okay.
Yeah, I feel like we've really done, I feel like it's a really efficient process at this point, so it's okay. The reason for the alphabet breakdown versus like grade or, or class is that if you're a family and you're picking up all three of your children. You don't want to have to wait for one that's in first grade and one that's in third grade and one that's in fifth grade. You want all your kids to come out at once and that's why it's by alphabet. Or maybe you do.
Or whatever works easier for you guys. I think for all of us parents, we have to work together and kind of accommodate and if it's something small we can do to make the day go by better, we should do it.
I think, I feel really good about it. I feel like it's, it's actually one of my favorite times to watch. It's just like, it's like, everybody's joyful. It's funny, you know, it works out really well. The walkie talkies are hysterical to listen to. It's almost like it's like a police scanner. It's so funny. So I think that was it.
Yep. Go back to financial implications just for a second. All of this has been reflected in our budget that we've seen so far today. This, this is all reflected.
Yes, so far. But I, this is reflective of what we've spent so far, Cheryl. I do anticipate there might be additional in these categories.
Okay.
Kate, would it be wise to purchase, if available, one of those tents? Because I saw, when I saw them, I was thinking. We could definitely use those if we were not in COVID. Is that something that the administration would consider or?
So it's funny, we actually looked into that before we rented. We actually thought of the same thing because who knows what the fall is going to bring and we were thinking the exact same thing. And one of the things that came down, at least for right now, and I think we do have to think about it more for the future, was that. If you purchase it, how you have it installed really matters for insurance and liability, whereas when you have it done by a company, there's steps that they do and then the liability is naturally theirs, not ours. And so it really was like, okay, we are not purchasing right now because then all the steps we would have to take, guarantee. And so it really was like, okay, we are not purchasing right now, because then all the steps we would have to take, guarantee, would potentially put us behind the eight ball. So really, that's why we went with the rented tents this year. But I agree, we, we really should pursue what it would look like for us to own them. And I don't know the cost effectiveness of that.
Kate, are you, follow-up questions from the chat? One is transmission outside is so low, is there a thought to give kids longer mask breaks outside?
So I can tell you that the teachers individually take the kids when they're ready. Or, you know, for most of the people on the ground floor, they just walk right outside and take a 10-minute walk around the building. Everybody takes their masks off. We have a teacher in fourth grade that does it every single day in the morning, because in the afternoon, it's already built into the rest of the day. They walk around the building together with their masks off. So it really, the teachers are very responsive to the kids when they need a mask break, and they just bring them outside. If it's an individual student, because we have the partnerships, it might be that the ESP goes out with a kid or two, depending on what they need.
What's, a parent is asking if they get there by two forty-five, will that be too late for pickup? They're trying to figure out their work schedule.
Nope, that's totally okay.
Are the concerns about numbers of kids who may come to the nurse at any given time?
Lily or Kristen have not expressed a concern for that. I don't know. It has not been an express concern. We have a really good system. We, the administration, I should say, my office is no longer my office, so we have an overflow room for the nurse's office. So we have thought of, like, if there are additional kids and we still need to space them, and if they're not feeling well. But it has worked so far, and hopefully it will continue to work.
That is it for the chat questions.
Okay, we're gonna have a visitor section too, so that comes up after this section. So I, Kate, I don't think you're done yet, but I just wanted people to know that, you know, if anybody else has questions, we'll be opening that up again for chat in a little bit.
I am done. I don't have anything else to share about the back-to-school planning.
Okay. What about the other two items? Who's Karen, who's covering those?
I am. For those now?
Yeah.
So at our last board meeting, we had talked about adjusting, this is when we were still on alternating schedules, on the blue-white schedule. So we had talked about adjusting the early release days. Does, that ring a bell? I hope so. We all have such full brains. And one of the early release days, we had moved from May thirteenth to May seventeenth. But then we also had a no-power day, so we had, we had no power, so there was no school. We need to make that day up. So what we would like to propose is that we not have the early release on May seventeenth. But instead have our last day of school be June seventeenth as an early release day. We really feel like we're just gonna be in the swing of things finally with everybody here in May, and to throw an early release day doesn't really serve anybody. Whereas at the end of the, end of the year, everybody's done. If we could do a half-day, that would make more sense to us as a, as a staff.
Don't we usually use those early release days for like parent conferences and things like that?
So we have eight early releases in the course of a year, Cheryl. Four are used for student-led conferences and four are used for professional learning.
Okay. And what you're telling me is we don't need that?
No, I'm telling you that more important is the kids having consistency and continuity for the last six weeks than to have another half-day in the middle of it. We, we need as much time as we can get, but I'm just trying to do what's best.
I get that. I just, what are we, what's, what's being given up though instead on that half-day? What, what was gonna happen on that half-day in May?
Oh, for staff, we probably would have done a lot of, well, typically that point of the year, teams are working really hard on like progress reports and conferring and things of that nature. Other things that we do around professional learning would be around inquiry or DEIJ work. But that can be done in June. It's not like it has to be done then.
And parent conferences, they're not happening in May or?
They already happened. They happened the last two weeks.
The last two weeks, like?
Two weeks ago, like last week.
Okay.
Like last week, week before that.
So when my kids were SMS, we had them in half-days in May. That's why I'm probably a little confused. Okay.
Yep.
Did them. I got it. Okay. Any questions about doing that? Any comments? Anybody like the idea?
I love the idea.
Okay, so do we vote on this, or we just need to give you feedback? We need to vote on this? Okay. Uh, who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Me, please me. I'll make a motion to, change our early release day from May seventeenth to early release day on June seventeenth. Is that right?
The last day of school, right? I think it's important to attach that to the last day of school, isn't it, Kate? We have a, okay.
It would have been the sixteenth, but we had the no-power day, so we need to make that day up.
Okay.
I have a question, and I think I'm pushing it by just asking, but I'm gonna throw it out there. Any way we can make June seventeenth a full day?
So by contract, there are eight early release days.
And we have to fulfill that. I'm just thinking, the last day of school, half of a day, what are the kids gonna get done in a half? I mean, it's just a fun day anyway. Yeah. Anyhow, so.
Yeah, it's usually celebrations, right? So usually celebrations.
I knew it was a wild card. I just figured I'd ask.
We can always expect you to ask, Krista.
Yeah, I recall coming in for the celebrations, then taking my kid home anyway. Remember that happening? Okay, any, uh, we didn't get a second on that motion.
I'll suck in it.
Thanks, Kate. Uh, any discussion? No, okay, let's go around. Let's see, Sarah, you're at the top of my list now.
Hey, hi.
Erin.
Hi.
Krista.
Hi.
Kate.
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Good. So we're five zero zero on that. Okay. And then we've got hiring, twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Am I gonna just take a sip of water? I'm sorry. I'm like parched from talking so much. This is not.
I will too. How about that?
Okay, so I'm gonna start with, as we, we've had a number of retirees, as you know. And we have been really thoughtful about where we're hiring people on the scale, right? To, to really be thinking about the budget and the financial implications for that. I say that second to, we're always looking for the right person. I don't want that to ever be the message that that's not the most important thing, because obviously having the most excellent staff and the personnel is most important. But we're also really conscious about the budget and where, where they fall. That being said, with the current people who are retiring and where we're bringing people in, I would like to propose that in, rather than replacing the point four school counselor that we replace at a point six, and it wouldn't change the bottom line of the budget at all. And the reason, I'm sorry, sorry.
No, that was giving my question. Why is that, Kate?
Because the people that are retiring at the top of our budget significantly. And then when we hire, we're, we have like a dollar figure that we say we don't go above this. So it might be that someone's a master's year seven, but then the other person is a bachelor's year three. So we use those numbers to average out to make sure we don't exceed the budget, what we had put in for the budget positions.
How many people are retiring again?
Let's see. So four, four, seven? I have seven. You have, oh, teaching staff four, and then some ESPs as well.
Okay. That's a lot, actually. We didn't usually have that many in a year.
Correct. I think we have talked a lot as a board, and particularly, we talked about this in the fall. When we looked at like the expected ratios, we're still not where we need, what is expected for school counseling. It's one to two hundred and fifty, and we have one point four right now. I'd like us to see, see us increase that without having any financial implications or impacts. In addition to that, I think one of the things that's been highlighted all year is the, the, social emotional wellness of our students, given the consequences of the pandemic or the unintended consequences. And the more staff we have to implement the program such as coping cat, the better off we're gonna be able to service our children.
And is this the same person? You just up the hours?
No, a, a person retired, so we need to fill the position. And I'm, yeah.
Well, any opinions for everybody else before I define that?
Think it's a no-brainer, right? We're going to get more time, more support for our students for the same amount of money.
Anybody else to comment?
I agree with Sarah. It's, um, I think that the staff was really cognizant of the way that they were hiring to allow this to happen.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think especially in this year and the year coming, we need to be super careful with our, our kiddos. Given the upset that they've had this year. And if we can do it within budget and we think we need it and it's worthwhile, which I'm assuming that's why you're recommending it. I think that's a, a, a good, good option for us.
Hey Cheryl, there's a comment in the chat that you're hard to hear, so I don't know if you can.
Oh. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. I get that at work as well. No, I, what I was saying is, given, you know, the, what the kids have been exposed to this year, with the disruption in their education and what we'll be facing next year, trying to get everybody back on track and, or, you know, socially reoriented and settled and confident. I think this is money probably well-spent, especially since it's within our current budget. Any other comments from anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah, do we need to vote on this? Yes, okay, thanks, Esther. All right, so what's your motion, Sarah?
Um, I would like to make a motion to increase the school counseling position from point four to point six for next school year.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. That was Erin, right? Thank you, Erin. Uh, any discussion? Any further comments? Questions, anything? I'm not seeing anything. Okay, so let's go around. Let's see, Sarah.
Aye.
Erin.
Aye.
Krista.
Aye.
And Kate.
Aye.
Good. And I'm an I as well. Okay, we're very unanimous tonight. Very good. All right, anything else? Kate?
Yes. So one of the things that we've been closely monitoring for a couple of years, and I know Sarah and Cheryl, you were here when Meg was the Director of Special Education and the, the really closely watching the number of case managers and the special ed caseloads that are coming or being, being required of our case managers. And one of the things that we've, so we've been monitoring it, we've tried lots of structural things to sort of help with that, whether it's scheduling, whether it's partnering people. And we really haven't been able to get ahead of the need to consider this more deeply. In addition, you add to that, that this year, in years past, you've had about roughly thirty referrals, maybe a little bit more. We currently have forty-nine this year already, and it's the beginning of April. In April, I'm sorry, in March, we had ten, and so far in April, we've had seven, and it's the fourteenth of April. So that doesn't mean every one of these students will be identified and then have an IEP. What it means is the absorbent amount of time it takes to assess children, make these determinations, have meetings. And then some of these students are identified and then servicing these students. The load is significant and the needs of our students, you know, is increasing. And so if we truly want to be able to give our students the best possible level of service that they deserve, we need to seriously consider an additional case manager. So that's part of this full picture, and I'm gonna try to paint a more comprehensive picture. The second part of this is to really think about, and we talked about this last year, we had Sue Hart, which was, who was a phenomenal speech language assistant who retired. And the board made the decision to, when we replaced that position, to replace it with a speech-language pathologist. And part of that is, it's not to say Sue was phenomenal, but there are things that a speech-language pathologist can do that a speech-language assistant cannot do. And Chris, I think you were actually part of this conversation last year when we talked about this. The same is, is true for case managers and the ESPs that work with them. Case managers are the only ones that can do the assessing. They're the ones that attend the meetings, they're the ones that write the IEPs. And they're the ones that deliver the specialized instruction. That's because they have the qualifications and the certifications to do that. Up until this point, we've been working, there's been ESPs that work beside them as their partners that can deliver some of the follow-up services or some of the pre-teaching, but really aren't the people that do the specialized instruction, right? And the planning around that, the gathering materials, those things. And so what we would like to do is, we've had four ESPs retire this year. And rather than replace three of them, we would like to financially, again, to keep our budget the same, replace, instead of replacing three of the ESPs, we would like to hire a seventh case manager. We really feel, again, as I mentioned, with the increase in referrals and student needs and what's going to come out of this pandemic, and what we're already seeing coming out of this pandemic, is truly the needing, the need for additional qualified, certified specialists, case managers. So we would like to propose that rather than replace three of our ESPs, we instead hire a case manager.
I have some initial thoughts. I'm just thinking about, over the past six years or so that I've been on the board finding all of our super talented ESPs has been really hard. It's really, really hard. And so, and I realize that they're retiring, so I understand that. But I guess I'm also thinking about the, the number of referrals is huge, but I'm also thinking that that means that there are some potentials for one-to-ones. There's gonna be additional ESPs that are going to probably be needed for some of these students that could potentially be requiring an IEP.
So, yeah, so, yeah, great question, Sarah. So one of the, the model that we have this year is every classroom teacher has a partner ESP. And we would like to continue with that model. And what that means is really thinking about, the best way I can explain this is, if we were to think about a case manager, say, working entirely within one grade level versus, right now, we have case managers that are working across three grade levels. It's near impossible to manage that. Because then you're communicating with how many different teachers, how many different schedules. It's really, really difficult. And when one piece falls, it's the domino effect. And I'm sure for any family that has a child that might have an IP, they understand how complicated this is. That, you know, it's really, it's a beautiful jigsaw puzzle when it comes together. But what I were thinking about with the current model we have right now is the ESP that's in the room. So if we have five fifth-grade teachers, we have five fifth-grade ESPs, and we have one case manager with that team. If they can consult together, plan together, you really can have this beautiful system where if you have three students across three different classrooms, but you have the ESPs, it might be, so I'm the ESP and I'm pulling one kid from Deb Craig, one kid from Sam Low, and one kid from Shannon. And I'm doing that math extension lesson with those kids, because we have, we have that shared collaboration planning time. Plus, we have that service delivery that would be much more flexible, which prevents a lot of that domino effect. So it really wouldn't be necessarily less ESPs. We would still have those relationships in the classroom, those one-to-one partnerships. It would just be restructuring, and the financial piece would come from the three that we wouldn't replace. And because we have highly qualified ESPs, we're so fortunate. The second piece that we have talked a lot about is that job-invented professional development, which is huge. When you have a structure of the one-to-one partnership, you really can do it within the day with students, with a coach right there or a consultant right there, which really helps build capacity within the building. It allows for our students to get across the board, whether you're, you have an IEP or a five oh four, or you're receiving tier two or tier three. There's just that many more people in your room with qualified that can provide some of that service for you.
So I'm just thinking, the ESPs, so I'm, I'm more hesitant about this, and, and the reason is, is because I feel ESPs are helpful to all tiers. And where I feel there's a very focused population that would benefit from a mana, a care manager, if you will. And they're also, they're more flexible, that they'd have a mortar, broader impact. So I don't, I guess a lot of people are going to need supports next year. And which position would make more of a difference? And I'm kind of thinking that ESPs may, I mean, can you speak to that? I mean, in terms of the diffuse population of our students, not just a focused one?
Sure. So I think it goes back to when you have the partnership that we're talking about, the teacher and the ESP. You're right, they get to service all of the kids, but we do have a percentage of our population that has to receive specialized services. They can't receive that from an ESP. It has to be from a case manager. And with the increase in number of kids, we need more personnel to provide that specialized instruction. But you're right, the ESP should be supporting all the kids in the class, no question.
So here's another question. If, would that place more responsibility on the ESPs that we have now? If we don't replace three, I mean, they're already doing a lot.
I don't see it that way, Krista. I see us expanding because we're creating a case manager that can do so many things that an ESP cannot do because of the laws behind your certifications and qualifications.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
You know, if you ask my husband, he would tell you always for spending additional money. So what is the thought about, I understand that the case manager position, I, I really do, especially given the numbers that you're saying. But I still wonder if we're in hindsight next year, gonna be like, oh, I kinda wish we had a few more ESPs. because we have a larger number of students that are identified. And we're going to need that support.
There's all, I mean, I, yeah, I think there's always potential for that, Sarah, just like every year when we go in not knowing the students that we're gonna have, or who might be identified. That's always the case. Um, but I think the model that we currently have has, has increased a number of ESPs than we even had two or three years ago. So we're already at an increased number than we had two or three years ago, based on our student need and the structures that we put together this year. I don't know if that helps answer that.
Kate?
Um, yeah, I'm kind of thinking along the same lines of Sarah. I mean, we can afford in our budget to have both, right? To, to have an extra case manager and hire ESPs if we need them.
This is a great question, Kate. So I think that would go actually to what Cheryl was asking about unencumbered funds at the end of this year. So we did not budget for the twenty, the FY twenty-two budget for the case manager, so it isn't in the budget for next year. That being said, what we have done in the past, like we did last year at the end of the year with unencumbered funds, we bought things that we had planned for in the budget for FY twenty-one, so that you freed up that money. That's what we did intentionally last year, because we didn't know what this year was gonna look like. If the board so chose, you could do that this year. You could say, we want to be able to keep in, or we want to replace the ESPs that are retiring, the three that I was talking about, not the individuals, but the positions. Um, and we could use unencumbered funds at the end of this year to purchase some of the things we had put in for the budget next year, so that you're not going above budget for next year. Is that clear, Kate? I'm not sure if you're good at explaining that.
Can we do that, though, with people?
No, we wouldn't be buying people, but you could buy materials that you would budget, Cheryl, like we could instead buy the technology-
Laughing at my question, sorry, go.
You said buy people, it just made me laugh.
No, but Cheryl, we could not do it for people, but what we could do is say, we're gonna purchase all the technology we plan for FY twenty-two now, freeze up that money in FY twenty-two that then you can use on people. You can't-
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you can't prepay for people.
Okay, sorry. I, I, thank you. That makes good sense, yeah. Um-
I just think our idea, because we can, um, interview and find really well-qualified people as opposed to mid-year next year saying, oh my gosh, and then it's so challenging to find, um, him's the right fit for the school.
Erin, do you have a comment?
I do. I need to hear more about what a case manager does. I don't know enough to make the decision.
So a case manager is, um, works specifically with students who have IEPs to deliver specialized instruction. So, um, that is a range of things. So sometimes it's literacy, and they're using the Wilson program, and they're supplementing with things from foundations and LLR, or whatever they're deciding to do. But they provide specialized instruction, and according to the law, Selena, click, correct me if I'm wrong, they are the only people by law that provide the specialized instruction. ESPs can provide, um, an extension of that, or some practice, or some skills, um, skill practice, but they cannot deliver the specialized instruction, um, because those are the people that have the certifications and qualifications to do that. Selena, did I say that properly?
You did.
Thank you. We are super fortunate to have, um, case managers who have not just like what they received in college, but have really done an excellent job of continued education, and so they really can offer a myriad of different, um, supports and specialized instruction. And as a matter of fact, are so, um, good at what they do. They can pull a little bit from this one and a little bit from this one, because they truly can then personalize for the children, um, that they work with.
Okay, and is the recommendation of a ratio of a school for our size, similar to what we're talking about for counseling, how many case managers to students, or to students who are identified with IEPs that we should have?
Yeah, so they don't actually do it that way for, um, case management, because it's not the number of kids, it's the number of services that they deliver. So you might be a case manager that has ten children, but they each receive forty-five minutes every single day. Or you might be a case manager of fifteen or twenty, but you only see them every other day, depending on what those students need. So it's really not as simple, um, of a matrix, um, to do that. I think one of the other things that we definitely run into, um, at Stratum with the, the number of kids we have and the length of our day, is it's very, very difficult, because our day is short and the number of kids, so it really is, it's shot every year when they're building the schedules, and this year in particular, just the patience, they have to rebuild these schedules over and over again, because it's really complicated in the current structures that we have.
Erin, do you think it would be helpful to know how many case managers we have currently?
Question. Yep, so we currently have five who work specifically with academics, um, with students, and then we have one that works more specifically with students that have, um, behavioral or emotional needs.
I expected that number to be higher.
Did I lie? I think I have it right.
Actually, we have two more who are in the preschool.
Oh shoot, I'm sorry. I consider them classroom teachers. That, they are, they case manage and classroom teach. Thank you, Selena. I am so sorry. I always consider them classroom teachers. Every time she says that, I'm like, they're classroom, yeah, that's my fault. Thank you, Selena. I'm so glad she's here to correct me.
Does that mean we have seven?
It does. It means we have two in preschool, yep.
Do it work with academics and one that works behavior?
I think there's eight total. That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, okay.
All right, you said five case managers, one behavioral case manager, and, um, two additional case managers that are preschool, so that would be eight.
Thank you, Sarah.
And I'm sorry, Kate, if you've already mentioned this, what's their current caseload?
Um, they range. I think right now they roughly have about fourteen students apiece. Is that accurate, Selena?
Four are K to five, that's accurate. Pre-K is different.
Okay, so, and that's their current caseload. So, given that you said you have how many pending referrals?
We've had forty-nine this year. We had ten come in in March and seven so far in April, so there's seventeen in the past month and a half.
And are those one through five, or K through five, uh, kindergarten?
I think they're pre-K through five.
Pre-K through five.
Selena?
Pre-K to five for the entire year. For the seventeen that Kate was referring to for March and April, that's, uh, pretty much school-age kids.
So just K through five. Thank you.
Right, and are the, and I could be asking too many questions. I'm just thinking, just because someone's referred doesn't mean that they're qualified, obviously. So typically, my mind is thinking, are these internal, external referral sources? Because typically, typically, like if it's a teacher referral source, it's, I would put more money on that.
They're actually all three, so some of them have come from where they're, um, at school now, so maybe a private school or another, other school. They're from parents, and then there's some from teachers as well.
So we're looking at it. Thank you.
Yep, I actually knew that answer. I didn't need to refer to Selena. Kate, I think you, I might have interrupted you, Kate Davis. Did I interrupt you with a, and you had a question? Okay.
Where would we be losing the ESPs? Where would you pull them, those people from?
Yep, so currently the ES, the case managers have ESPs that work with them. That's where that would come from. And then they, we, let me be clear, they would not be losing their jobs. I think that's super, super important, because I would hate for them to hear that message. It would be restructuring. It would not be anybody losing their job. We are, our ESPs are so good. I don't want to lose any of them ever.
So I just want to clarify. So, we're going to, you, we're gonna keep three, so it's adding. We're only adding a case manager, correct?
No, I had proposed not filling three that retired.
Okay, so we're not-
That's where-
Settled that part, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you, that was proposed. I think someone said, what about doing both, rehiring and doing the case manager? Would, that's not what I had started the conversation with, correct, Krista?
I think that Kate Davis and I were thinking, kind of toying around with that idea.
I have two questions. One, um, where would you put this person in the building?
Yep, that's a great question. So, our case managers share classroom spaces, so there's between two or three case managers in a room.
Okay, so they don't need, we don't need new office space, or something like that, which we know is not really available.
No, real estate is at a premium at SMS right now. The three admin have been squirreled away in the wolf's den, and it's the most lonely place in the building. Today, I was like, I am going wherever I can be other than, I was in the speech room, I was in the library. I was like, I can't be over there anymore.
So my second question, um, I think it's interesting that you're not asking for the three to be replaced. So Sarah and Kate both suggested, should we do both, but I don't see you jumping on that, and I'm wondering-
Oh, amen. Let me hear. I'm jumping on if you guys are willing. I just really, I was trying not to spend money that wasn't in the budget, and-
No, I get it.
That is best for kids, because there is, this is, please, I don't ever want this to be, our ESPs are phenomenal. They don't have some of the certification qualifications of a case manager. That's just the reality, just like a speech is, isn't a speech. So it is not about how amazing our ESPs were. I was literally trying to adjust where we need another case manager, and I was trying to make it work within budget. If you're feeling like we could potentially fund it in another way, I would love to replace them.
I mean, they wouldn't be idle, right? It's not surplus, right? You've got-
There's no idle, there's no idle involved anywhere right now.
I didn't think so. Okay, I just wanted to understand, you know, how you would potentially deploy. Three people. Okay, so what do we need to do here?
Um, Cheryl, could I make a recommendation?
Yeah, please.
Could I, uh, could I recommend that we hold on this, and the final decision until May? I would like to, um, unless you wanna, the board chooses to, um, say that they want to pay those retirements out, because those retirements would then free up that money in next year's budget to pay for a case manager. And we would know the money was there, and already budgeted for the ESP, so you see what I'm saying? If the board wants to revisit that, paying that money out for the retirements in this year's budget, which you can do, then we would know we had that hundred and, I think it's exactly a hundred and fifty-four thousand, which is more than enough to pay for one case manager position. So that would be my recommendation. I, I, I hesitate to say wait until May, because again, we're in the hiring season, et cetera, and I know that puts the board in a difficult position, but I just want to lay that out. You certainly can wait till May, but I know if you, uh, want that retirement paid out from this year, I know that that's built into next year's budget for, um, the appropriate amount that would cover that, that additional case manager position.
What if we don't tie your hands, Kate, and we approve the case manager position, so that you can start hiring? And then we can kind of finish the conversation about the three S, ESPs in May. Would that be helpful?
All of this is fantastic. I am at the boards. No, honestly, I, if, I love the idea of giving us the permission to move forward with the case manager. I feel like that's really important, and I think we've done such a nice job of trying to get out early to hire, because we know how, how important the right people for the job is, and I know the value of bringing the right people into the system. And Cheryl, you have been part of hiring, and Erin, you have been part of it, and Sarah, and you know how, what it's like to get out there early and to see what is available to bring into our team. Um, so I would love to be able to do that. Um, and I don't know, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Esther, I don't know that continuing in May for the ESPs wouldn't make a, a difference at this point, correct? Or do you feel like, because typically ESPs don't interview for the next year until summertime or the end of the year, anyway.
They don't, but in the case of Stratum, as we've mentioned, many are teacher-certified, and to get that caliber of ESP there in high demand, and I, I don't, I don't want to say, oh, it's no problem, and I don't want to say it's absolutely undoable. I just want to recognize that normally we do attract, uh, a higher level of, um, competency in our ESPs. It doesn't have to be there to be an SP, ESP, but we're fortunate that that is the case at, at Stratum.
So, um, are we thinking we want to decide on prepaying that retirement money in order to free up money for the case manager?
I think we were gonna table that until May, and that we were going to go ahead, and if someone wanted to make a motion to approve for the additional case manager, case manager position, that we would do that, so Kate could have some time.
What you're saying, so separate the funding from the decision to have the case manager. Ah, got it, okay, sorry.
Because we know we can do that next month. We don't want to hold Kate up, because-
Yep, no, I agree. I, I think I missed the beginning of what you said. Okay, um, do you need a motion from us to? To approve this?
Yes.
Okay. Anybody feeling moved to make a motion?
Me. I'll make a motion to, um, approve for the additional case manager position for school year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have any more discussion? No more comments, no questions. Okay, let's go around. Um, Sarah?
Aye.
Erin? I can't hear you. Still can't hear you.
Aye.
Oh, there we go. Okay, Karissa?
Aye.
Thank you. Kate?
Aye.
And I'll be an I as well. So five zero zero, very good. Let's go get the best person. You're fine, Kate.
I'm thrilled, thank you so much. Can I, I have a clarifying question, because I'm tired, and I apologize. Am I, am I also then holding off to replacing the ESPs, or are we talking just the funding sources later?
Well, let's hold off, and, and I prefer to hold off, wait till we decide what we're gonna do with the retirement stipends and, and move forward then. If that's okay with you, Cheryl.
Oh, that's fine with me. It looks like everybody else is kind of agreeing as well, that we'll hold off on the funding and the mayor ESP decision in May. We'll put that on the agenda as a old business item, Esther. Good. Well, that's exciting, good. Um, is that the, do you have anything more, Kate?
Sure, no, I don't know. No, I'm just like, I just wanted to update you really quickly on the closets, so all the renovations. They are completely ready and happening over April vacation. They're gonna start with the two smaller ones, so they can guarantee that they're done before the kids come back, because they're actually inside the building, and we can't have visitors in the building. And they're hoping that they'll have enough time to complete the one, um, at the far end of the kindergarten hallway. Because if it bleeds into that Monday or Tuesday and we return it, it's still outside the building, and nobody would have to be inside the building, still honoring the no visitor policy. But the staff did an unbelievable job of, um, getting their stuff out, and then Tim and his crew, I can't even, yeah, anyway. So we're ready for that, which feels really, really good. I got an email from Banwell this week, offering their timeline for the programming analysis. So I will, um, get, be meeting with Brad to sort of fine-tune that a little bit, and figure out some dates that work a little bit better for us, because there were some conflicts, um, but that's moving forward as well.
Great. Okay, anything else? That was a lot. Um, okay, next on our agenda, we have visitors. I think we've answered an awful lot of the questions. So, um, do you want to open up that chat again, Esther, or have you left, or did you leave it open?
I left it open, and I did have, uh, one question that came up, and let me find it. Of course, I-
Yeah, I can't see it, just so you know.
I, I, I recognize that.
Oh, okay.
One question was around, hold on.
Hey Esther, people are more than welcome to zoom in, correct? Or do they have to go through the chat function? So can they put their face up and ask the question, like we were at a in-person meeting?
The chair has requested that the questions come through the chat.
Yeah, I would rather that we have the-
I'm sorry, I got so confused over all that.
No, that's okay. It's, we, we've run the other meetings that way, through the joint board, et cetera, through the chat, and I, I just think it's neater and tidier.
I thought people just wanted to. I didn't know there was the, it wasn't the option.
So the question is about, uh, the health screening. If a parent answers no, and the student isn't coming to school, is that an automatic call to the nurse and follow-up? Or do they just?
Yep, so what, what will be, so that, we talked about that today, we had a conversation about this today. We're gonna send out an, our newsletter talking about pickup patrol, um, and letting parents sort of understand what goes in and what doesn't go in, um, and also helping them understand who can see what's in pickup patrol, because many of our families use it. And some families are very comfortable with information they're sharing, and others are not. So we really want to help parents understand, when you put this in here, this is who sees it. The front office staff sees it, the administration can see it, the health office and the classroom teachers can see it. So what you put in that is really, really important. If your child is not gonna be in school, we're gonna ask you to do two things. Not gonna be in school, which is great, and if they're sick, just put sick. You don't have to put what symptoms, but just put sick, so that Nurse Lily or Nurse Kristen knows to follow up with a phone call. If you're just gonna be out, because you're going to do something with your family, you can just say, not here for the day. But if you put sick in, we do a follow-up, because it's really important for us to, that's been super helpful. The, the families have been working so collaboratively with the health office, and it really does keep us informed and keep kids, um, as healthy as possible.
Thanks, and the last question, uh, that just came in was, when will meetings go back in person, so parents can participate in person?
School meetings or board meetings?
Board meetings.
They're meeting board meetings.
I think the answer is when we're back, uh, allowing visitors in the school. I don't see that happening this school year, obviously, or, you know, we've only got a couple months to go. And I really don't know what that'll look like at the end of the summer or the fall, if we've got, you know, really low case, you know, vaccination, you know, high vaccinations and low case, um, infection exposures, if we'll feel better as an SAU, you know, having in-person meetings. Not sure I want to rush that, quite honestly, because it was to keep the, the building as clean as possible- Not sure I want to rush that, quite honestly, because it was to keep the building as clean as possible and keep people as safe as possible. Although we, of course, prefer those, you know, those empty library meetings where we have one or two people show up. I have to say, this is not a great forum, but we've had a lot more people engaged this past year. Not, not only because the topic's more important, but because it's, I think it's easier for people to pay attention and be engaged. So we'll have to see. I, I'm not going to, you know, we'll have to make that decision as a board with the administration team. I've been, I just don't see that happening before the school year's out, certainly. Hi Kate, yes?
I, I just had a question about the in-person meetings. Is there a way to do it so that it could be a hybrid? So that parents could zoom in if they wanted to and then also be like a reserved seating? And we could have so many parents allowed to come in, sitting six feet apart with masks on if they wanted to be there in person to kind of give parents and community members the option to do that?
I mean, it's certainly something we can talk about when we let visitors back in the, in the school. That's kind of a, you know, a half-sees approach and maybe that's the way we step back into it. I, I don't know. I think we're, it's a little premature at the moment to talk that through. But do we, the bigger question, I think, is do we have the technology? Did you handle that, Esther? We've had board members, you know, dial in, for example, when they couldn't be at a meeting and we leave it a quorum.
Right. First thing we'd have to look at, and I don't, I don't have the answer tonight, Cheryl, is the policy around board, you know, participation in electronic communication, et cetera. Right now, with the, the way of no visitors and what's going on in the state, there's, you know, some changes are made to those RSAs to accommodate these kind of formats. So I don't, I don't anticipate that it's out of the question by any means, the hybrid thing. I just don't have that answer around how that'll affect policy as well as, you know, the no visitor.
Esther, that's a local. So that's our decision as a board. That is not a joint board SAU decision, correct?
As long as we're aligned with the RSAs and the technology pieces, right? Yep, that would be a local.
We say Stratum wanted to go back and then Kensington didn't. That's okay. That's.
Yep, it's an individual board conversation. So that conversation would really start with, as Cheryl has mentioned, the visitors into the building.
So I, I just, I guess I have a question to the rest of the board is, obviously, right now, we're getting the kids back in school. That's our main priority and everything. Could we possibly revisit it in August? And so have a deadline of either, if we're not going to go back, we will make a point to discuss this August. So September, we know exactly where our platform will be. Can we, can we plan that? Is that okay?
Yeah, if we have an August meeting. We don't always have August meetings, quite frankly. Typically, we don't have a July meeting or an August meeting, if I remember correctly, but.
I don't remember when we did meetings.
Oh, no.
I think we.
This year, we probably will.
We do, yeah. We typically do have an August meeting. We also get together to do the welcome back breakfast, all those things, like in a normal year. So we would, we can connect in August. That does typically happen.
I, I'd prefer to connect in August regardless of what our decision is to revisit it because I do think it's important. And I think, I think we're all on page where I don't think visitors are going to be allowed in the school this year. So it just gives us and the parents a framework of when we'll acknowledge it, we'll come back to it and it is, it is on our mind. Can we agree to that?
Sure, that's no problem. I don't think we intended that policy to go on in perpetuity, right?
No, it, things, things may look very, very different in August. It may not be an issue.
Right.
Right, I think we'll have a, a better outlook. It's similar to, we looked at, we said no visitors September. We revisited that in January, which was still a no, but at least it gives us a point of reference of something to go with it, if you will.
Yep, just remind Cheryl to put that on the August agenda.
Yeah, I got it. I got it on my notes. Okay.
Other questions from visitors, Cheryl?
Okay, good. So we can move on to old business. Ew, I think I have a couple of things in my pile here. Kindergarten enrollment, my favorite question. How are we doing, Kate?
Seventy, sorry, 77 kids as a last check.
That's pretty good, right, for this time of year?
It's great. I think too, now with the plan for a full return, I think that'll have some influence on it because a lot of families had reached out and just wanted to know more about, you know, what the fall could potentially look like. And I think the spring is giving us some indication that it would be, obviously, it's going to be five days of in-person. And I think that's what parents were waiting to hear about. So I think we'll hear more or have more registrants sooner rather than later.
An influx of first grade registrations, since people might have gone a different route for kindergarten this year?
That's a good question. We have a lot of families that ended up either doing something different, whether regardless of the grade. They, some people did private school, some people did homeschool, and a lot of those families have reached out and heard now that we're doing this that they plan to re-enroll. Even though, some of them even completed those surveys saying not now because I don't want to change with this little bit of time left, but you can anticipate we'll be back in the fall. We just don't have exact numbers at this time.
And where did we land with our transition day? We landed on Friday.
Friday, yep.
Friday, that's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure. Okay. That was all I had. As follow-ups for me. Anybody else? Okay, new business? Anything we haven't?
I just have a super non-public, Cheryl, under new.
Okay. Kate, do you have something as well?
Yeah, could, is there a way that we can post these meetings to make them more easily, or more easily accessible to parents? I feel like, I mean, I've even had a hard time on the SAU site trying to find the Zoom links. Or can it be posted more, I mean, in the, I know sometimes it's out in Kate's emails, but can we just make it more of a thing so that people can find it easier? I mean, I had parents emailing me like two minutes prior, like, I can't get on. I don't know the password, just to make it more accessible to everybody.
Kate, I can leave it as like a standing always on the newsletter rather than just putting it on when it's coming up. I can just sort of like leave it, you know what I mean, like just have next school board meeting and always just keep it on there so it's updated. Would that be something that might be helpful?
Yeah, I think so. I think it's just, it's kind of hard to find on the SAU site. And, you know, everybody has so much going on, we all kind of need like a little bit of a reminder of when it's happening.
I, I can do that, no problem.
Are you talking about the date or access, the Zoom access?
I guess both. But yeah, both, if possible, if you could put the Zoom. Because I know if you go onto the SAU site under SMS, it will show that there's a meeting, but then you kind of have to go, I don't even know where now, to like another location on the SAU site to find the actual Zoom link. So it's just a little more work, I guess. Thanks.
Are we still posting at the, at the street as well, Kate? That there's a board meeting, even though it's a Zoom board meeting? We still post that, although?
Absolutely.
Now we'll have more parents, of course, dropping off probably. So maybe more parents will see that.
I don't know that they will because they don't come to the building when they drop off, Cheryl. Like what you're talking about is they don't come up to the doors. So I think I can just leave it on the newsletter at the bottom and it just, and I just update with the new date and time and it just is there. I think that will be helpful.
No, I meant at the street. Remember the, the sign at the street we used to post it on the plaque?
No, it wasn't up this month and I don't put the Zoom link up there. So we can certainly put it back up there that the next date for the school board meeting, if it's not something already on there, no problem. That's a great idea as well. And we used to do it. I don't know why we stopped, but we can get back to that. I just, Zoom link, I don't think would fit on there. I also don't think it's going to be helpful. You have to take a picture of it. You drive by because you're not going to be able to remember it, but I can certainly add it to the newsletter.
And I think the, is there any other way to make the SAU websites easier to access that info, Esther? I know when we have a, you know, a short posted meeting, like on Monday, we decide we're going to meet on Wednesday. There's probably not time to get it out on Kate's newsletter. Is it posted though, as with the link and all the info?
Has to be, yes. They have to go, but they go to school board. And then it's right there. It says posting and they click on the posting and there's the posting with the live link.
So let me just walk that through. So they go to sau16.org website, right?
And they go to Stratum School.
Or Stratum School, okay.
Yep, and then they go to school board.
Okay, so it's listed under school board, okay.
Then you'll see posting with the date. If you open that up, it's there with a live link and it has the password on the posting because it's the actual posting.
Right. Okay. All right. Anything else? New business? Nope. Okey-dokey. I think we need to go into non-public. Is that right, Esther?
I would ask the board to go in that under RSA 91AA, which is dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee.
I'll make the motion to go into non-public under RSA 91AA.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Kate, thank you. Any discussion? Probably not. We have to go around everybody on this one like we do on the others. So Sarah?
Hi.
Erin? Karissa?
Hi.
Kate?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Okay. So we will now move into non-public. Are we going to use the same? Okay, so we're back in public, our public meeting.
Can I make the, a motion to approve the vacation buyback? For 2021 vacation for Stratum principal, vice principal and what's Selena's title? Director of special education?
Anybody want a second?
I'll second it.
Kate? Okay, any discussion? All right, Sarah?
Hi.
Erin? Kate?
Hi.
Karissa?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Good. Do we need to, I'm sorry, were you specific about how many days? Or does it not matter? In that kind of a motion?
It's okay. The way the motion is presented is okay.
Okay, good. And then that, that was it, right? We don't need to make a motion on the other one. So that was just negotiation. Good. All right, sure.
Do we not have a secretary anymore?
No, we do not. She resigned.
No, so right now Kayla, the administrative, is the secretary. This is the recording and does the minutes. So they will be probably more brief than you're accustomed to. I normally do the non-public because they're brief and easy. So if Kayla can't do them, then it'll be me and there'll be discussion into, discussion into, I can tell you right now. But I'll, we will get these minutes done and Kayla's good about turning them around fairly quickly.
Yeah, no, she did a good job with the last set. That's good, okay. What was that?
My name was spelled right.
I know, all right.
How do we get another secretary, if you will? Is that something?
We will post it if Kayla doesn't want to continue to do it. She does it outside of work hours. So she's essentially the secretary that we pay her to do it, like we did our old secretary. If it becomes too much, it doesn't, she doesn't think she has the time because she has a few other boards also, then we will post it, like we did.
Well, tell her we appreciate her stepping in and taking that on. Thank you. Okay, do we have anything else?
I'll make a motion to end this meeting.
Okay. I think that's the second by Sarah. All right, all those in favor, I think I can see.
At the end of the day is horrible.
I've been, I've been doing this all day long. I feel the same way. I kind of, yeah, definitely. Okay, all right. I think I can see everybody.